And furthermore, when you do that on your browser.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Jamie. I'll try that again. Fantastic. Good evening. Like to, we did call our meeting to order for the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 1st, 2021. We called to order at 6:00 and which went into executive session to discuss two items. One was the strategy sessions and executive session for the purpose of strategy concerning a potential agreement with non-union personnel, namely the town administrator. And secondly pursuant to MGL 38, Section 21, Paragraph 3, to discuss with respect collective bargaining for all town unions if an open session would have detrimental effects. We had good discussions. You might guess especially the discussion with the town unions will continue. At 6:35, we went out of executive session and back to open session. So if you will, I'd like to start our open session by asking you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is, as I think we're all aware, we had an election a week or so ago now. And we welcomed a while ago.
Thank you.
Mary Anderson. So I feel tonight is a proper night to reorganize going into the next year. And I would ask for that. I'd also suggest and propose that we are short a member. We have four members until we're looking for September. Is that right? September?
September 21st.
September 21st, spatial election. So being short one member, my proposal is that we elect a chair. We elect a vice chair and ask that person also to take on the role of clerk. And then as in past practices, the two members that aren't elected automatically become the interview committee. And with that, I would ask for, are there any nominations for chair? Mary?
I'd like to nominate Michael MacAsil for chair.
Okay, is there a second? Don, you second it? Okay. With that, I assume, Michael, you're okay with that?
I would be happy to be chair this year.
Thank you. I take nothing for granted, so I'll ask the question. With that, I'll take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Michael.
I'll vote for myself.
Good, and you should.
And thank you all for the confidence.
Thank you for that. Except nominations, as I said, for, is there any disagreement, by the way, with my proposal to combine vice chair with clerk? The reason I looked at it that way, we can look at it different ways, but I felt that mainly just in terms of the amount of time that you need to vote to the position. Interviews take some time. Vice chair takes a little less time, and clerk very important, but also takes a little less time. So they seem to be a marriage to me, just in time involvement. Don?
Not to be contentious or disagree here, but I think it's kind of important with a new member to be able to understand mechanisms municipal workings. Traditionally, notwithstanding Michael, because he's been chair twice already, so it was just kind of a shuffle. But traditionally, if somebody new comes in, we would normally have them as clerk. Just as a learning process to get involved in the governance part.
Okay.
The only other, well, the only workaround around that, I gave this a lot of thought prior to tonight's meeting as well, is thinking that whoever is nominated as the interview committee, any and all other board members could rotate and serve the second interview person. We all have to kind of cover whilst we have a vacancy. And we're going to be covering on committees as well as liaisons. So I don't see any reason why every one of us couldn't work with whoever is on the interview committee, whether we do a rotating schedule or whether a member just volunteers to be the second person until September 21st.
Well, my personal hope is I'm on the permanent interview committee. Don?
Yeah, this is as good a time as any to just bring back up a proposal I've had for quite a number of years. There is nothing etched in stone, and certainly nothing in the charter, that says that there is an interview committee. That's just been something that we have done in that manner. But to the extent that we have to post it anyway, which we do, I personally don't see any reason why there can't be a committee of the whole that could participate, because as long as you're posting, you're covered on any and all people who show up. There's no real reason why only two and nobody else can show up ever, particularly if there's some vexing appointment that you'd like to be able to get a firsthand look at how they respond to questions.
Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, you may want to yield, you're not presently on camera. And now you're presently on camera. Thank you. So I believe that was covered by audio, but we had camera difficulties.
Well.
Thank you.
Yeah, through the years, it's varied somewhat. We've always had an interview committee. Now, it's never been only, we have had occasions in the past where others have joined the interview when they had spatial interests. It's never been shut out from that. You know, it's never been excluded for, anyone can join the interview. And maybe, I don't know if we've done it the last couple of years, but I know, looking back, there's been at least a couple of years. I know early on, a couple of years from now, I was interviewing committee, we had people who joined us every so often that were interested in the applicants. Mary?
Frankly, I've heard a lot is broken with the whole committee process and how you get on it and the process. I get a lot of complaints on that. So I personally have some interest in getting involved with the interview committee and see if I can't make it better.
My preference would be to have two in the interview committee is to keep it simpler and just be sure we invite anyone to join us if they want.
I feel a little bit compelled to respond to what Mary said.
Yeah.
The broken part got somewhat ameliorated by a shift in staff. There's really, it's been, Michael's been down that road with me. It's been really difficult to even know where the vacancies were, when they expired. Once Sandy left, things basically unraveled. It's not all coming from here.
That's right. We had the.
Oh, I didn't mean to imply that, Don.
Well. Go ahead, Michael.
I think, you know, obviously we're short a member. Mary, to your point, interview committee, I get the same complaints. And any board member, any sitting board member can be part of fixing anything that's broken, whether you're appointed, not appointed. Input. And I do think that a certain amount of the problem was fixed. I think we still have some problems. I think the board still needs to take up record retention so that if somebody doesn't get picked and then there's another round of interviews.
Right, right.
And we recently got an email on.
Right.
Golf one. And very spelled out.
Yeah.
And I think ultimately past staff, office staff, not board, because it's not the interview committee's responsibility to keep the records. Somehow or another, that got either thrown away or put in the wrong file. So I think that there's plenty of things that need to be fixed. Larry, I would stand by my initial statement. And if I may, I'd like to make a motion for, or nomination for a vice chair. But I'd stand by my initial that board members either alternate or somebody volunteer when we're done with nominating what we have. Because the vacancy, we have to have a clerk.
We have to have a clerk.
Have a chairman. We have to have at least one person on there. But I think we vote the structure and the obvious vacancy, to me, is an interview committee vacancy for now. And then we work together to make sure that there's no hole there covering for the absent board members. So with that, and we can go back to what you wanted, if you want, I'm going to make a nomination for Don Howell to be vice chair.
I'm going to respectfully decline.
Okay.
I just don't have any interest in being chair next year. I've shared this with Larry. It's not a superstition. In all deference to you, because you're doing it. I don't think it's a good idea in an election year to be chair. I don't want to be biased in what I'm doing.
I respect that. I absolutely respect that.
So with that in mind, it wouldn't make any sense.
And then if I, now if I can extend that, would it make sense to appoint a clerk and to interview committee and leave the vice chair vacant? Because anyone can chair a meeting moving forward. Don certainly could chair a meeting. Larry can certainly chair a meeting. And I think with a little bit of reading, Mary could certainly chair a meeting. So would it make sense to leave the vice chair position vacant?
Yeah, I could do that. I think our disagreement is going to be on a rotating interview committee. Because I think if we don't nail that down, it's going to be a problem. Just because human nature.
Then I would move to nominate Mary as the clerk.
Second, if she'll take it.
You can deny it too.
So if I take it, I can still go to the interview meetings, am I correct?
Yeah, those are open.
And I will graciously accept.
Okay. Yeah.
Especially if they go for my committee of the whole. Anybody could.
Well, I think we need to emphasize the fact, and we haven't done it recently, but I think it's important to have two dedicated people on the interview committee so nothing falls through the cracks. I do think we need to emphasize that we all can go. We post them. And we should, and we should. I've been, and I haven't, and I take that, that's my fault.
I'm just hoping to get through the interviews on Thursday that we have before we hand it over, because that's been in the works.
Right. Well, we said it's open then. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Thank you, Mary. Cheer up.
Someone will tell me what I need to do.
We will.
I think you will.
I offered anything you need.
Yeah. We'll take a roll call then. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And with that, I would nominate Larry and Don to be on the interview committee.
Okay.
But not precluding Mary's participation.
No, no, just as a.
No, no, and I've said that.
I will second that.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so my official announcement then is then to move the chair to you, Michael.
Thank you.
I changed seats with you, but maybe it's more hassle than it's worth tonight.
I'm fine, right where I am. If I may, as my first official action, I want to thank Larry Ballantyne. Through some extraordinary times, he has been the chair. This was a year of learning Zoom or whatever platform we're on. This was a year of a lot of contention and trying to manage a crowd that's online and with no real way to quickly mute or get order. You did an excellent job. You've led us through a lot. You've been the chair two years in a row, so I can't tell you how much I appreciate how much you have done work-wise for the town of Harwich, both as a fellow board member as well as a taxpayer. Thank you for all that you have done for the town.
Yes, thank you, Larry. I'm sure it was not easy.
It's been a hell of a last year.
You still get a round of applause. Okay, so, Michael, you're.
I want the hammer.
It says here you're muted.
What's that?
It says here you're muted.
Am I muted?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I guess we go to weekly briefing, and I'll turn that over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In a moment, I'll recognize or ask you to recognize our Public Health Director, Dr. Katie O'Neil. First, I want to explain why there was nothing in your packet regarding the update. First, there was very little to update last week. There's been one slight change that Katie will talk about regarding caseload, but I also want to emphasize that Katie was able to take a day off last week and string a few together, which is well-deserved, well-earned. I also wanted to start out, just to remind the general public through you, the Board of Selectmen, because I do want to make the distinction that the fact that the town of Harwich is reopening our buildings, excuse me, reopening our buildings to the general public on Tuesday, June 15th, is a decision that was borne out of your Administration Department and me specifically. That is to say, if it's the wrong decision, it was me and not Katie. If it was the right decision, I was motivated and directed by information from others, including Katie. But again, the reminder on that is we will be reopening town buildings, all town buildings, on Tuesday, June 15th, because it ties nicely to the fact that we were able to have an employee vaccination clinic, the second dose of which falls where they will be fully vaccinated by June 15th. So we're asking everyone's understanding and patience thus far to know that once we reopen, we have the highest safety measures in place as we go back to what we now understand perhaps can be our new normal. So again, town buildings slated to reopen Tuesday, June 15th, fully. And when we do, there will be no masks or similar type restrictions. So then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you would recognize our Public Health Director, I'd be happy to turn it over to Katie.
Katie? Floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. So as Joe said, it's a short and sweet update, which is really nice. Harwich remains in the gray designation. The VNA is currently following one active case. We have a little under 8,000 individuals in town that are fully vaccinated. This past Saturday, all the remaining sector-specific protocols were lifted, including the mask mandate. And as Joe mentioned, we had our employee clinic this past Wednesday, which times out perfectly for our reopening on June 15th, giving the employees that two weeks that they need to fully build up their immunity after the second dose. So the timing worked out well with that. At that time, town buildings will not require masks after the 15th, excuse me, on the 15th. And that's short and sweet tonight.
Thank you. Turn it over to Cindy Williams.
Good evening, everyone. So if any indication of this past weekend, there were lots of shopping bags, lots of cars, and plenty of diners throughout all of Harwich restaurants. So looking forward to a great season. Businesses are still questioning what they want to do in regards to masks and such. There's a mixed bag going on right now. Some are putting signs that they're a fully vaccinated shop or please wear a mask. So today was the first day of selling beach stickers in transfer stations here at the chamber. And I saw everything from masks, no masks. Lots of smiles from residents and property owners that we were once again offering that service. So it's going to be a good year. Good season. Actually, it's already halfway through the year.
Any questions for?
And that's all for me.
Only, Michael, if I may, one comment. I did go online and I got my beach and dump, I won't say dump, but stickers with no muss, no fuss. I got a note today that it's in the mail. So it worked out very well. Mary?
Cindy, I've been asked what the status is of the strolls, the music in the port. Is that on or off, or to be determined?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may take.
Thank you.
I think Cindy and I just made contact, if that's possible, and that would be. So that is a request that has come in from our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director that I've asked her to hold off until the board has had a chance to talk about. We've contemplated a discussion with licensees, but I think it's appropriate to first have a discussion of the board of what your expectations are generally of the community this summer when it comes to noise. And then while we do that, we could dovetail that into the request for the music in the port, which, if I can make reference to, isn't contemplated for July. So we do have some time to have those conversations, and I think it might be best to align it in that way.
Okay.
First, for a general discussion about what the board expects, you know, really to be the culture and the mindset as we get into this new summer season.
Thank you, Joe, channeling Cindy.
Cindy, how'd I do? Did I admit to enough? Thank you.
You did good.
I'll set down. Going to move on to public comment announcement?
So presently, Mr. Chairman, we have two requests for a public comment that relate to agenda items. And that would be the Police Enforcement of Noise Bylaw, and that would be a request for regarding a private wedding. So we have, we're not aware of any other requests at this time.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Michael, if I may, I'll.
Go ahead.
Regarding the consent agenda, I move, we vote to accept the resignation of Noreen Donahue from the Capitol Outlay Committee. As you know, she was recently elected to the Water and Wastewater Committee. B, move to vote to approve the annual police appointments. And C is move to vote, move to vote to approve the Garden Club of Harwich to hang a certificate, a certified National Wildlife Federation Community banner at various locations.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Just, I talked to Jerry Schuman today from the Garden Committee, because I must be blind, I've never noticed the banners. And in chatting with her, she just asked what the process was for her to be notified. So I told her I would find out, and if you like, I can call her tomorrow. Is there a process?
I think tomorrow's process that you will reach out to her.
Okay, I will call her tomorrow.
Normally, the staff would, staff would reach out.
Yeah.
And respond to the request. But if you, if you know, it'd be great if you could.
I know her, yes. Okay.
Joe?
And then, Mr. Chairman, on that item, just wanted to emphasize that the locations in question are all town property.
Right.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, we'll do a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Okay, next up is new business discussion with the Chief of Police on enforcement of the noise bylaw. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before, before we get into this, this was not entirely what I had asked for. Just because I, I'm not going to be able to get into that discussion, but there's more than just enforcement of the noise bylaw that we've been discussing that we want to focus the chief's attention on in the department. So there needs to be a follow-on agenda item about priorities.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that rests with me. I apologize. I went over the recording and thought this was accomplishing that, but we'll make sure we have the additional discussions on the agenda.
We've talked about speeding and other things.
Yes.
There's a number of issues.
We will get that on, Don. Joe, do you want to start this one?
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And actually, I did myself a disservice to the earlier concept about music in the port. This is also one of the conversations that I think would be helpful as we look to those other events and activities, but as we speak with Chief Gilmet now about our noise bylaw. So, you know, we're all well aware of the activities that this board and your staff and the town went through regarding liquor violations that were associated with entertainment, but also just general noise and operations. So based on an earlier comment by Selectman Howell and others, we have this conversation tonight to delve into. And you have in your packet, I hope you have in your packet, what consists of the full noise bylaw of the town. So I thought it'd be appropriate to have the chief speak, but we could also then expand upon that and begin the discussion perhaps of what the board is looking for from the community for noise around certain areas and certain operations generally.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Do we want to start with board, or do we want to start with the police chief? Okay, we'll start with Don Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just focusing on this particular issue, Chief, especially with those liquor and entertainment hearings that we had, it pretty much came to our attention that while there were responses to some of these places, there weren't any records because people weren't cited. It left us in a very poor position for us to be able to enforce, you know, the licenses that we issued. So I, for one, want to express my dismay that if, if there's something that happens that causes the police to go out there, it's not that, my expectation would be, and I hope the rest of the board would be, that you can discuss it with the owner and we'll just diffuse the situation. There's a number of these places that are chronic violators, if you will. I mean, once we go over the bylaw, but if you go out and it's not someone who normally you do go out to, yeah, sure, maybe you could have some sort of warning or some. But at the end of the day, there's got to be some paper record, a paper trail that allows us to be able to enforce things that need to be enforced. The underpinning for us to enforce any violations of the noise bylaw would be a violation that would be issued by an officer. Just a response showing up on the log that you went there isn't sufficient.
Mary?
It was painfully obvious from those hearings that we need to do something about noise. To hear residents unable to sleep and the description of some of what went on, some of which had to do with liquor and not noise. But the noise is generally what drew the police to the setting. I'm with Don. I think we need some teeth in the, in the law with, and I've read through this, there's a violation. If you have to go back a second time, it's another viol. I think we need to get a little strict.
Thank you, Mary. Larry?
Yeah, I agree with those comments. I'm actually, I guess, felt pretty good about the bylaw itself. We had a lot of criticism of the bylaw, but the bylaw is pretty straightforward about what the violations are. And so I think there is some opportunity for us to, to hold people more accountable to those than we have had.
My only comments before I turn it over to the chief is, you know, chief, chief and I had this conversation unrelated to Harwich Port and noise, but related to a dirt bike issue. And in the noise bylaw, we did get some clarification from legal, which the chief was sent on that particular thing. I'd reiterate what Joe Powers said at the beginning. This is the beginning of many upcoming conversations about the noise bylaw. And we're still due to review the report from the Noise Committee, Noise Containment Committee. We have things to discuss, like what the punishment scale is going to be outside of our noise bylaw for licensed establishments. So this is going to be a much broader conversation. There is, I know several of the residents of Harwich Port hired an attorney who did their own opinion of our noise bylaw and what we should be enforcing and not. And I know that person wants to speak. So I think that this is going to go in a much deeper direction. But tonight, and I know it got on the agenda so that we can just say we need to enforce the noise bylaw. And in my conversations with the chief, I think the chief has plenty to say tonight and some internal policies that they are, that they are contemplating or already have come up with that will address this. We also have the annual meeting with our licensed establishments coming up that I'm sure the chief will speak about and Joe can speak about. But this board needs to set a direction in general on what we're going to allow for noise complaints before X happens and Y happens and Z happens. So we're not going to accomplish that tonight. I think we, we need to post that a little bit differently, and we need to invite several people. That might be one of our special meetings. This has been, for three years now, a very hot topic. And we only, we only approved outdoor entertainment, if I can remember correctly, started to be approved in 2016, 2017. So to be in 2021 and have gone through as much as we've gone through on complaints, clearly we need to fix something. With that, Chief, I'll turn this over to you.
Well, thanks, Mr. Chair, members of the board. And thank you, you know, for this opportunity to have this discussion. You know, it's, I'm sure for each of you and for every member of my police department, myself included, it's been a very frustrating experience to deal with this issue. There's certainly a lot of moving parts here. And by way of response to Don's comments, which, Don, I completely agree with you. But I guess I have to present my, what I, what I projected is my philosophy down through the ranks in the police department. And I've mentioned this at the Noise Containment Committee meetings as well. You know, it depends on what your op. You know, it depends on what you're operating under, and I know everybody's talking about the noise by law, okay? But as we all learned through the previous hearings we've been through, there are liquor regulations too that apply. So I understand that the by law has a clause in there that says, hey, a violation of your, say, a violation of your entertainment license is also considered a violation of the by law. So I guess maybe when we're done here tonight, I would definitely ask for some direction as far as which way you want to go, but I want to continue to explain my philosophy on this. And my philosophy that has always been, where we're not responding out to a licensed establishment that has an entertainment license and a liquor license obtained through the local licensing authority, that has major amounts of teeth in it, that can take action on both the entertainment and the liquor license, not going to respond out to an establishment like that and write a $150 noise by law citation. Now, if, if you disagree with that, I certainly want to have the discussion, but that has been my philosophy, that's why we're not writing a noise by law citation. And, Don, again, to your comment, a lot of the times in those, those visits to those establishments and in my review of all those reports, yes, there were some that fell through the cracks, absolutely, and I own that. But there were also times when the officer would go out there for a complaint of loud music and not hear anything. So it makes no sense to me to forward that to the board because there's no, there's no action that's necessary on it. So some of those calls, a large majority of those calls over the last three years, you know, due to either no noise occurring or this, the, the opinion of the officer that it was not plainly audible, you know, are, are going to fall into that category. But I guess I'd like to give the board an opportunity, give me some direction, if you think that philosophy is wrong, where you want our officers to go out and actually write a noise by law citation. Is, is that what you, you're, you're looking for at this point? Because before you respond, I just want to say that I polled every police department on the Cape, and nobody does it that way. All the alleged violations or issues, either noise or otherwise, are brought to the attention of the local licensing authority.
Thank you, Chief. I'll give the board members an opportunity to respond, and I'll start with Don.
Well, Chief, since you asked it that way, yeah, that's what I do want. There is no way for us as a licensure board to enforce anything if there's no record of anything. So, no, I don't want you to make up a violation if it's not plainly audible in their, in their, you know, response to the complaint, but if they're hearing something that the person complained about, yeah, there should be something written, and it's up to us about how that gets escalated. But maybe the first time, we just issue a warning as a license board, but unless we got something solid, there's nothing to act on, other than vague complaints. The establishments have continued to say, well, you don't have, there were no citations written to us, so there's nothing to act on.
If, if I may, Don, just to reply to that, there is something. In, in each one of those instances, there is either a log entry with the officer's observations and findings, or as, as I've requested from this point forward, every time we deal with a drinking establishment, there is going to be a police report done. There will be a log entry, and there'll be an offense number, and a report will be done. So there is a record of it, and that's what was forwarded to the board. I, I think, and obviously, if we go the citation route, there's going to be a report to go along with it also. It's not just going to be the, the ticket. And I guess, you know, the reason I, I, I don't have an issue with the by law citation process, I, I understand your frustration with feeling that you didn't have enough documentation. I clearly understand where you're coming from there, but are, are you saying that, so you want, you want a monetary fine written out for the by law violation and then it accompanied with a report? And then the board's going to, you know, that, that fine is, is managed through the town, right? But then if they fail to pay, it goes to court. Seems to be adding an extra layer that's not maybe necessary.
Don?
Let me make this clear. Me, as an individual, has no authority to tell you anything, but the board does. The, all I'm saying to you ultimately is, you can point to other towns, I might point that we don't live there, but if you look at Harwich Port particularly, but the rest of the town too, it is substantively different than it was 10 to 15 years ago. There is a lot more going on, there's a lot more activity, there are a lot more people who have gotten licenses for entertainment, there are a lot more licensed pouring establishments, which is all to the good in terms of tourism and everything, but you've got, you've got to be sensitive to the fact that the Route 28 corridor is 150 feet deep on either side for businesses. After that 150 feet, it's all residential, and it's really difficult to live within that context, especially now. I mean, looking at the prices of houses and everything, you want to spend $700,000 for a house so that you can't get to sleep until like 1 o'clock at night? So something's got to give. We have to, even if it was a warning citation, something has to be done. It, it became apparent in the hearing that a log entry was not sufficient.
I'm going to, Joe Powers, please, Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my comments are meant to perhaps help with the discussion and not hinder it, but I, but I understand where the chief's coming from. I have our, the town's liquor license regulations open on my laptop and search on the word noise, and within the liquor regulations, there are four instances that relate to noise. Now, the middle two are the ones that we're all aware of. It talks about outside and indoor entertainment and outdoor entertainment, and it talks about the concept of noise. But within that, there's also a, a line in there early on in the regulations that talks about noise outside of an establishment caused by the establishment having a line of people waiting to get in. So there's line outside noise, if you will. And then later in the regulations, after the section on violations, there is a reference to overall management of the establishment, and the last item in that section talks about when there's any noise, and it talks about disturbance, misconduct, et cetera, et cetera. In each of those sections, meaning separate from entertainment, the licensing regulations refer to them as held in violation of the license and subject to proceedings for discipline. And so I bring that up because as the chief has mentioned, we have our noise by law, and we can get back into that discussion generally, and as it may relate to the, say, the use of motorized vehicles, as we know, for some neighborhood complaints. But what I want to emphasize is, as we talk about noise as it relates to licensed establishments, I will make sure that staff, me as administrator and my team, and as we work with the chief and other agencies to have our discussions with licensees, to emphasize that there's any number of opportunities for them to be held accountable for noise. So the chief is correct, where if they cite under a noise by law, that's a noncriminal disposition, we ought not to go that route. We want to go within the noise references and the liquor license violations, and I think there's a way to achieve that. But I think part of that is, this discussion is relatively, if I could say it this way, new for the town. That is to say, we haven't had these discussions, to my knowledge, you know, in the two years that I've been here. Now, part of that's because of the massive international pandemic that we've been dealing with, but now that we come out of that, this is the right time to have these conversations. So I do think it will help, and the chief and I and others can talk more about it after tonight, but we can make a very legitimate and significant distinction between noise caused generally under the by laws, separate from noise caused at a licensed establishment. And I found that to be helpful for me because what that tells me in the liquor license regulations, there may be more charges that could be forthcoming to establishments when we read the entirety of the regulations. It's not just under the violations, and it's not just related to entertainment. So we may be able to find a way to accomplish what I think Selectman Howell is suggesting, separate from the noise by law itself when it comes to establishments. But then it comes back to that question of what, how do you want to handle the noise by law for nonlicensed establishments? You know, before I spoke, I was trying to race through the by law to see, would the music in the port be allowed as a town use under the noise by law? It's not a licensed establishment, but those are the things that we would want to be aware of as a community so we can be more consistent in our messaging.
Thank you. Real quick, Don, before you, before you go, thank you, Joe, thanks for looking that up. And I was just going to say, my, my opinion is, just what the chief has proposed tonight is very different than what we had last year. So we are going to, he is going to do a police report, a certain amount of police reports, or even every one police report on a licensed establishment, which we're seeing in our packet tonight from two other, two other locations, is a big step forward. It is, it is certainly not the be all, end all, and we have to, we have to come up with three noise complaints that are found equals this on your license. Six equals this on your license. Nine equals, so that it's uniform across the board, and we will not have to go through those hearings. Last year, Chief, the frustration, as I explained to you, was when we had the hearing, we didn't know about those. It, it sounds to me like you've already corrected that. So, and as I said in the outset, we're not going to fix this tonight. I think the message from the board, and at least the message from me tonight would be, we need to enforce the noise by law. And, and I do view them, as Joe did, very separately, the noise by law for nonlicensed establishments versus licensed establishments, and, and, and we need to look at an enforcement division, we need to look at how fast the hearing dates are, but most important is for the board to have the information, and I think the chief has at least addressed that tonight. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since the Town Administrator has brought this up, you, you alluded to it, but I'm going to go a little bit further. Music in the port, it's one night, and all noise is not equal to all other noise. When it happens is as important as where it's happening. Something that, that benefits everybody, there's no alcohol involved in it, and it breaks off at either 8 or 9 o'clock, is a way different situation than egregious noise at midnight, when you live next to a place that's got people who've been drinking most of the night. That's, it's an entirely different circumstance in my mind.
I agree. Mary?
Certainly, it sounds like we've got some steps to make it better. I appreciate what you've talked about, Chief. I think that sounds like a step in the right direction. I still feel like I'm a little bit in the middle of the movie here, so I'd like to continue this conversation when we bring it with the licensing as well. But I'm with you, Michael, I think there ought to be a list, one violation, two, make it very clear, and very consistent.
Thank you. And with that, I'll go back to Joe this, Joe and I had the same conversation weeks ago about coming up with a structure, and I think we've talked about it for a year and a half now, but structure is important. Joe?
Just to go back to an earlier comment, I did find noise by law, 189-1 subsection F, sub item nine, public gathering. So clearly, when I stopped the log jam that prevented Cindy from coming before the board, when that comes before you, it's an act that you'll permit, and that section of the by law allows that to happen. And that's something that I'll emphasize to our licensed establishments and other folks going forward. There are opportunities for the town, for the selectmen, to allow these things to happen, but they are controlled and they are within the noise by law, and there's a structure around them. So I think that's important to put out.
Thank you. Larry?
It's been a good discussion, Mr. Chair. I, this is the first time we've really been presenting, and thank you, Chief, and Joe, for the concept of license versus nonlicense, concern about noise and what our opportunities are, and so that gives us some guidance we can go forward, and I too like the escalation clause, that we can give a warning to start off with, and, because we want to be fair for the, want, want to be fair to the businesses and also to the butters, and that would give us an opportunity maybe to do that, so. We have more work, but it's good.
Thank you, Larry. Chief, you know, my takeaway on this is, and maybe not all of us, is that the message is being sent by the board that we want to enforce the noise by law. I think we've heard from enough residents that, that in different, not just entertainment, but in, in, in noise as well, we want it, we want to enforce the noise by law. And, and like you, I view the licensed establishments separate than I view a dirt bike in somebody's backyard. So I, I think you're discretion. If you would, Chief, you, you had mentioned to me, and looking at the agenda, I want to try and close this out soon, but will you tell me what you're talking about for internal policies to start the enforcement of this, and then your mechanism for getting this to the town administrator as soon as these things happen, so the board can be informed on it?
Right, thanks, Mr. Chair. Well, you've already got on the agenda tonight some issues that I've identified that have already occurred. So there will be, obviously, if we have a busy summer, like we anticipate, there will be more, and my, my, my personal policy and with the command staff is going to be, there's going to be a very, very intense review of the log, especially from the weekends, but every week during the summer season, and any and all issues that could potentially impact a licensee's entertainment or liquor license or conduct, you know, that could impact that as a result of the board taking action on it, is going to be sent up to the board for review. I did issue a policy statement back on Friday, just before the start of the weekend, because I was, I was concerned that we were going to get off on the wrong foot, and I wanted to clarify a few things, so I did release a, a three-page policy statement with some, some requirements, some new, some changes from what we've done in the past, and I just want to give you a quick rundown on it. So as I already mentioned, it requires that every time we interact with a, with a drinking establishment, no matter what, it, it gets a log entry and it gets an incident number and a detailed report as to exactly what happened. And I go into the noise complaints, which also include crowd noise. Crowd noise was a, a fairly new phenomenon for us last year, and I think, myself included, we had a little trouble understanding the fact that, you know, crowd noise is going to fall into the same category as, as live entertainment with amplification from this point forward, because it's creating as much of a, of a problem, if not more, than the actual music. So I, I have some guidance for investigating officers on, on crowd noise as well as noise from entertainment. It talks about the 150-foot rule, and the officer should definitely identify where they're, where they're located, they should try and speak to the reporting party, listen from that area, and then determine if they are 150 feet or beyond from there and document their findings. We are no longer, as you may remember, a few years back, or actually, my policy since the start of this outside entertainment, was I felt it was reasonable to afford the establishment one warning, and that would be in the form of a, of a written notice to the, to the manager. That is no longer going to occur. There are going to be no more warnings, there are going to be no written warnings, no verbal warnings, everything's going to be documented and sent up the line to the board. I also am asking that they, and I think the officers have done a very good job, commendable job with this, they do contact management every single time that they respond to a complaint, okay? So and they advise them that, hey, we got a complaint, they said it was too loud, and then the officer is usually going to share with management his findings or her findings as far as, I'm not considering an alleged violation tonight, or this is clearly a valid complaint, and it's going to be going up the line. I think they've done a good job communicating with management to that point. And then there were just a few more bullets in my, in my policy statement here, and this is what I alluded to at the very beginning, that I am instructing the officers unless I receive different guidance, that we are handling these issues not as a written by law noise citation, but as something that is going to be detailed and documented and sent up the line to the local licensing authority for potential action on the license for each and every one. I also mentioned the noise by law in there, that it does have the, the clause that means that if you are violating the, the terms of your entertainment license with noise or crowd noise, then that's also considered a by law violation. I included the information on the port in Ember, changes to their outside entertainment license, the limitations on those, and we'll continue to try and do some roll call training on that to make sure everyone is aware that that is what is, that is what the standard is for this season. I talk about the 10 o'clock, all outside entertainment must end, any noise after 10 o'clock is clearly an alleged violation that needs to be brought to our attention immediately. And one of the other ones that was fairly contentious in the noise containment committee meetings is the definition of plainly audible. And one of the other ones that was fairly contentious in the noise containment committee meetings is the definition of plainly audible. I, from this point forward, unless I'm told otherwise by you folks, I believe that the definition of plainly audible should be that which is within the noise by law. So that reads as, any sound from a source regulated by this by law that can be detected above routine, normal, ambient background noise by unaided human hearing. So, any sound beyond 150 out of those establishments is gonna be considered an alleged violation of the entertainment license. I also mention in here that the premises are supposed to be open at all times to inspection by the police, because we are the agents of the local licensing authority. And any hindrance to this type of thing can also call for action against the license. Obviously, we're getting into areas other than noise, but I want to, as we saw in some of the hearings, there were issues related to things other than noise that could also be considered violation. And I also talk about closing time. There's an issue on your agenda tonight related to that. And there appears to be a bit of a conflict between the local regulation and the state statute related to closing time. Now, all of your liquor licenses that you issued show a 1:00 a.m. closing time, but your local regulation allows for, appears to allow for a 15-minute buffer period, so that no people are supposed to be on the premises 15 minutes after closing time. That is different than state law. So I am instructing my officers to allow the 15 minutes at this point in time, unless you want to get a legal definition and tell me otherwise, that anybody on the premises, any patrons on the premises after 1:15 is gonna be a potential violation of the license. And that is, that's about the gist of what my policy statement said to the troops on Friday.
Thank you, Chief. Before I get on to the caller that wishes to speak on this, I'll go back to the board. Mary?
Chief, could you just explain what the difference is, then, between our 15 minutes and state law? What is state law?
State law, as I understand it, is all patrons have to be on the premises by 1:00 a.m.
So, closing time is 1:00 a.m.?
Your local regulation states, nobody can be on the premises 15 minutes after. But it does say, no allowance for drink consumption time. So, once, I believe the local regulation states, once the closing time has arrived, all parties have to be up and moving out. I don't believe that's the state law. State law is all parties off the premises by 1:00 a.m. So there's a 15-minute window there that it looks like we would probably have to allow, unless we get a legal opinion that says state law is gonna carry.
But if anything, we're being generous.
Yes.
Thank you.
Don? Larry?
I'm set.
Joe, anything further?
No, and the individual is Mr. Bob Cohen.
Okay. Before I get to you, Bob, I would just ask the town administrator to look and see, ask a legal opinion if that 15-minute local is superseded by the state, just for the next meeting we have on this.
Understood.
So that we have that.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. And before I turn it over to Bob Cohen, it's a shame that we've gotten here, but we are here. Many, many, many other towns on the Cape and beyond, 10 o'clock comes, everybody has to go inside the establishment. Most Cape towns don't allow for any outdoor entertainment. The previous boards from 2016 on have been very pro-business, and really put themselves out there to have this draw to Harwich Port, and I think it's been well received by a lot of people. Unfortunately, it's been abused. And now, listening to the amount of people that have voiced their concerns and complaints, we have no option but to put these policies in place and to have these conversations. So, with that, Bob Cohen?
Hi, Mr. Chair and board members. I've got something of what is admittedly a side issue. I really appreciate what the chief has said tonight and the board. As a side issue, I wanted to mention that there seems to be a growing problem with noise from rental properties. I recall Selectman Ford mentioned a couple of times that he'd been fielding complaints about noise from large rental properties. And I know of one in my own neighborhood, which has been a problem from time to time, that I've been told of recurring noise problems, including from weddings at other rental properties. I don't know how to deal with this issue, but it looks like part of the problem may be in section E of the noise by law, which provides a kind of loophole for property owners. That is, it's the person directly responsible for the noise, in the first paragraph of the, any person or persons so acting as to violate the provisions of this by law, and generally, this is the renter who's playing the music, or shouting, or carrying on, who's the primary person charged with the violation. And the owner or manager is only charged with the violation if that primary person can't be determined. Ordinarily, this would seem to be pretty reasonable, but when there are repeated violations at the same property, for instance, when a property is rented out as a party house or as a wedding venue, it might be good to find a way to have the owners bear more responsibility. As it stands now, there's little incentive for property owners themselves to curtail the noise. Further fines of $150 for the first offense and $300 for subsequent offenses are probably insignificant for the more expensive rentals. Anyway, I want to bring this to your attention, and hopefully, it can be addressed more fully later. I realize it pales by comparison to the other topics you're talking about. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for your input. And I think you heard us loud and clear that this is the first of many conversations, and the overall noise committee recommendations, as well as resident complaints, will be brought up very soon. Anything else on this? Okay, moving on. New business, B, discussion and possible vote to hold a public hearing for the alleged violations at the Seal Pub 703 Main Street. Joe, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I turn it over to our chief of police, I just want to outline, excuse me, what you'll see here is there are two different establishments and two different actions related to the two establishments. First, right now, you would be contemplating the memorandum provided by Chief Gilmet in your packet. And again, I will yield to the chief if you have any questions for him. If you think what he's documented rises to the level of a hearing for determination if a violation occurred. And then, you can contemplate a separate action of naming me as hearing officer. So, there is first the discussion of, do you think the memorandum that the chief provide warrants a hearing? And if so, do you want to name a hearing officer? And then you would do the same two steps for the other establishment.
Okay. So I'm gonna start with the board on this. Police chief's on the phone, if we need him, but it was pretty spelled out in the packet. So I will start with Mary on this one, and we are to, just to determine whether or not we want to have a hearing on this. And then, as Joe mentioned, we will vote to have him as the hearing officer, if that's what the board wants. So, Mary, based on what you see, do you think it warrants a hearing?
I think it does, if we're gonna be consistent. I don't know how to be consistent if we only hear some and don't hear others. Now, I also don't want to see Joe turned into a, you know, 40 hours a week hearing officer. I'm hoping this is an unusual week, and we don't get a letter every week.
I can agree with that. Larry?
Yeah, I see the need for consistency. I'm a little reluctant to raise this to a hearing at this point. I think it was a well-written and detailed report that, not reading it right now, but there was people drinking after hours. The explanation was, they were all staff members, and they shouldn't be drinking. I don't know if we have an option of, without a hearing, to give a warning. I guess we're not doing that. But I guess I'll wait and see what the other discussions are. I take the point of consistency. This one is a kind of, in my mind, a little borderline.
Don?
I respectfully disagree. I mean, I'm more inclined to agree with Mary. If we don't set a tone and a standard early on, it tends to vector out, and it's, you misconstrue the lack of enforcement as meaning forbearance, that everything's fine, you can keep doing what you're doing. At some point or another, there's just so many of these places that are involved at the moment. It wouldn't be hard for me to conceive of us losing control of this, because what's the advantage of playing by the rules? People violate with impunity, nobody ever calls them in. This has nothing to do with any specific establishment, but I'd really rather have a statement be made, you know, that the rules are the rules, gonna come in, and in all deference to you, Larry, that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna suspend their license. But I mean, I think it's important to have them come into the venue here and be told this is a violation, and what's gonna happen, we've had conversations over the last couple of years about this, about escalating. What's gonna happen is, if we have to call you back again, then there's gonna be more punitive action than just a warning. Unless you call them in, I don't know how you do that.
No. Well, I'm just gonna say that, thank you, Don and Mary. It was a good discussion, and I, I'll take your advice. I'll follow along. You've convinced me.
I, too, share the, I hope that our town administrator doesn't become a full-time hearing officer. And I think that as we progress with the noise committee recommendations and board conversation, maybe we have an enforcement division that's made up of other staff, that it doesn't always have to be Joe. But I do think that, based on the police reports, based on what it is, it is at very least worthy of having a hearing. I have read detailed reports from the town administrator as a hearing officer, that he has reviewed finding of facts and found not responsible, and that he has issued a warning. And on this, at least, if that's the outcome, that they know that by 1:15, the light should be off, and nobody should be there, and that going forward, that is a violation, I think for that reason alone, it's worthy of having a hearing on this. So with that, I would entertain a motion from a board member to hold the public hearing on the alleged violations.
So moved. I'm not going to repeat all that, to hold the hearing, appoint Joel as a hearing officer.
No, that's a separate motion. So right now, it's just for the public hearing for the Seal Pub 703 Main Street, for alleged violations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Larry?
And I am an aye as well.
Okay, and the next is, would be a motion to have the town administrator be the hearing officer for alleged violation.
So moved. We appoint the town administrator.
Then I'll just, I'm just gonna add in, so it's for the record that it's the vote to authorize the town administrator to be the hearing officer for the public hearing for alleged violations at Seal Pub 703 Main Street, and have Joe be the hearing officer.
And that's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
And I am an aye. And Larry, the only reason I'm doing that is I think it's important to have the name and the motion and the address. Next up is D, discussion and possible vote to hold a public hearing for the alleged violation at Whichmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club, 23 Snow In Road. Same process, we're gonna, we're gonna, whether or not we want to hold a public hearing on this, based on the information that's in the packet. And I will start with you, Don, conversation.
I'd be willing to make a motion to do it, in line with what we just previously did.
I'm fine with the motion, and we can have discussion after, if you'd like.
All right. I move that we hold a public hearing on alleged violations at Whichmere Harbor Club.
Address?
23 Snow In Road.
Okay. Larry seconded that, Joe. Okay, roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Can I just ask a question first?
Sure.
In the, I think it's the police log, Chief, it has all the things that took place on May 16. And then there's a narrative, maybe it doesn't belong with this same case, for May 22, on this second call. Does that belong there? It sounds like a week later. I was confused by that.
That may be the data was printed out. Mary, where are you seeing that? I have a log entry that's dated the 16th, and a report that's dated the 16th.
If I may assist?
Yeah.
Chief, the first thing we see is the Harwich call summary, call number blank, printed 5/26/2021. The last item on that list says narrative 0522/2021. And then there is a follow-up that is narrative for a patrol officer. So that narrative page encompasses the dates of May 16, and then May 22. I believe I know the.
Yeah, you've got a report.
Chief, I believe it may be that the officer filed his report on the 22nd to recount what he did on the 16th.
Oh.
Yes. Oh, I see. And that's the log entry, that's the last entry. The, Chief, it's, had to be some following directed on that.
Yeah, Chief, you broke up.
You cut out, we couldn't quite hear what you said.
Okay. Yeah, I'm still getting that feedback.
You're clearer now.
Okay. It is describing the events of the 16th.
Okay.
The report relates to the events of the 16th, Mary. The date had been authored on the 22nd.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, Mary. Would that roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Next would be E, and that's to, same alleged violation, to appoint the town administrator to be the hearing officer.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to read, just read the address, Don, please, establishment address, just so the record's clear.
23 Snow In Road, were alleged violations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
And I am an aye.
Okay, next up is discussion and possible vote to approve a one-day entertainment license for private wedding to be held July 31, 2021.
I move we approve a one-day entertainment license for a private wedding to be held on July 31, 2021. And let me just pull that up to, just, trying to get the address.
I had that, too.
For the hours of, the request is for five to 10.
Yes, the request for the hours is five to 10, and it's a backyard.
July 31st.
And it's on July 31st, why I don't have, is the.
I just would like that in a motion, because that's just as important.
Right. It's backyard, July 31st, from five to 10.
I don't see an address in the letter.
I would ask, Joe, there is no address on this, so I would ask for a withdrawal of the motion and the second. I think it's important, since we're supposed to be notifying the public, that we have the address.
Yeah, I agree.
So I apologize. I know we have the address. I think it was redacted out of an abundance of caution, so we'll make sure we have that correct.
I'll withdraw my motion, then.
Okay.
We'll have that correct for the next meeting.
All right. So we're gonna bring this back next week. I know that there's a caller on tonight. Is that caller, is the caller okay with this being brought back next week, or do they want to speak on this tonight?
I believe the individual was either Francis Rich, or Fancis Rich, if I'm saying that right. That was the individual that has to be heard.
Is Fran Rich still on the call? Okay, we'll just, we're gonna bring this back next week. All right.
I'm not seeing.
Moving on. Item G, discussion and possible vote to accept a gift in the amount of $2,728.98 from Friends of Harwich Town Band to the Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call vote.
Just that Dodd-Hemmings provided exceptional narrative regarding what this is all about. And it's my understanding that this concludes the efforts of the Friends of the Harwich Town Band. This would be their final act. And so we certainly want to thank them for their generosity and their time.
Okay. And with what Joe said, thank you very much for your effort and time. Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Old business, ongoing discussion of the comprehensive wastewater management plan, discussion and possible vote for dedicated wastewater meeting. Who'd like to start this?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I know, when I look at my screen at the moment, I'll see that we're joined by our town engineer, Griffin Ryder, there we go, our water, wastewater superintendent, Dan Pelletier, and from GHD, our vendor that's helping us with modeling and all of that, we've got Russ Cleecamp. And also, an opportunity for me to say that things are returning to normal, because we're now returning back to ongoing discussions about wastewater. So the discussion this evening is coming from the. So the discussion this evening is coming from the team that I just referenced and contemplating, for a number of reasons, a, um, a dedicated meeting in this month to the topic of wastewater, the particulars of which I'll yield to the, to the team members. However, and I don't know that the team members know this yet, but you may recall or you may have seen a late afternoon email from Ellen Powell of my staff to you folks that included correspondence from chairman of the Yarmouth Board of Selectment, Mark Forrest, to the former chairman of the Harwich Board of Selectment, Mr. Ballantyne. But in that letter, Selectmen Forrest indicates that there's an earnest desire of the other towns, at least certainly evidenced by Yarmouth, to contemplate those discussions regarding multi-town agreements and also that we, the town, are scheduled to participate in the wastewater meetings that we did as the three towns later this month, I believe the date is June 18th. So we're resuming discussion of wastewater generally because as it relates to DHY, the three towns agreed to take a break until after town meetings, we're all done with town meeting. So I just wanted the board to be aware that we do have that correspondence from the town of Yarmouth, separate and distinct, I think, however, from what Dan, Griffin and Russ will be talking about this evening.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I might add that the town of Yarmouth is only one of the three towns. From my own conversations with members of Finance Committee and Dennis, who would be hosting the plant, it doesn't sound like they would be adverse to having a conversation that would still have participation, but not necessarily through the DHY process with a commission. I think we need to pursue that as a possibility because it's not just the flow that we're going to be treating, it's how we're going to be doing that in the governance. Larry knows, it's always bothered me that you come up with an agreement that creates a new organizational structure, something like the Turnpike Authority or whatever, and they have a board of governors, but in this process, they can amend the agreement as soon as they're appointed and the agreement can change without further recourse for the town meeting. That's something that I've worked on for two years to try to get to a comfort level, but it, one doesn't preclude the other from, is what I'm saying, is it's possible for us to come to some sort of understanding that maybe Dennis builds the plant, because they didn't appropriate money either. Maybe Dennis builds the plant and there's an understanding that we have IMAs with them to process, but there's somebody who's actually responsible for it as opposed to a commission that you send on its way and they never come back.
Thank you, Don. Larry?
Well, as Don stated, and actually there was an article in today's paper that Dennis is, uh, rethinking or wanting to go back and question some of the information, so... But this meeting's very timely. Yeah, I think we're now looking at a point, we've discussed it sort of broadly for a couple of years. I think now's, and I think what Joe's turning to present is, we need to really dig into this and see where we're going. And we can't, we've, we've delayed discussions in, in action for, for some time now. I think now's the opportunity, is this needs to be one of our top priorities.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
I, I look forward to hearing from Dan and Griffin because they know what this is all about, so I think it's very important that we have that meeting.
Great. And Joe, you think that meeting is July 18, June 18?
June 18th, was supposed to be the DHY meeting, correct? I was hoping to reach out to my counterparts when they were done with their town meetings just to have an informal discussion as administrators. However, before I could, another engineering firm unrelated to the one presenting tonight sort of jumped that gun and resuscitated the meeting, so.
And I would say that it's, it's reasonable to say that after that meeting, we can have an educated conversation about where everybody else is at.
I think so.
Great, thank you. So Dan, I'm going to start with you since you're our wastewater, water wastewater superintendent and you can direct it to whomever you want.
Yeah, well, I guess, um, to pick up on all the comments, um, you know, really, in order to make an informed decision, the sewer CAD model, and one of the things that's pivotal to that model is identifying and locating the sewer pump stations across town. So, um, I'm, I'm happy to turn it over to Russ in just a second, but really what we're looking forward to doing tonight is to really iron out a date that we could sit down collectively and go through the 30-plus pump station locations throughout town. And that's really the preliminary before we get into the, the down and dirty with the model is the pump stations are really kind of the, one of the most important things. So I guess, Russ, I'll turn it to you to, to add to that.
Sure, no, very well said, Dan, and good evening to the board, Mr. Town Administrator. Looking forward to meeting in person soon, that's going to be a nice change of pace. Never thought I'd hear myself say that, but, um, we're going in the right direction. So what the, the point of this meeting would be to have is, as Dan mentioned, we're, we're building the sewer CAD model for the town, which is going to parlay into, you know, very defined cost estimates, which, which will go into the financial plan that will be part of the modified CWMP. So while we're working on separate assignments, they all tie into the big picture of the overall, um, town's management of wastewater moving forward in the years to come. But really, the first step is to, to iron out these pump station locations and, and I get it, every town, you know, when it comes to pump stations, um, you know, they seem to be, uh, you know, frowned upon by most of the public because it's sewage and they smell and they look like a giant cinder block building, they're unesthetic. You know, we've, we've, we've run into this with all the towns that we work for, so, um, the way the gravity system works is everything flows downhill, so naturally the, the pump station sites tend to be in low points, but what else you get in low points is water, which usually means there's conservation areas around. They could be within flood zones, for any pump station that's within a flood zone, it has to be elevated up, up higher above the flood zone. And then you get, um, locations that are on private property, so you may have to do a taking or something like that. Well, any one of those three hurdles is, you can overcome, when you start to have multiple hurdles, it starts, you know, it's still possible, but it just complicates the, the site of the pump station. So what we've laid out is our shot, it's roughly 30, 32 pump station sites that look to be on parcels that, for the most part, look to be buildable. But we wanted to run through those sites on a parcel, or a site-by-site basis with the board, so the board fully understands, you know, where we're proposing to put these pump stations. And then we can also talk about things like the aesthetics. I have several slides of pump stations in other towns. In fact, I'll present a few pictures and, and ask the board to pick out the pump stations. Some are very obvious and others has done an excellent job of, of making the pump stations blend into the surroundings. So they can look very Cape Codish, you know, with the cedar, cedar shingles and the, you know, really whatever you want them to look like. It's just the architectural treatment on the outside. The odors is another big thing, what do you do about odor control, things like that. The easiest thing to say is go to a pump station in Chatham, walk around it, see what you smell. And, and we can put in odor control, there's not, if it's built properly, the odors are typically minimal, but I know if I, you know, was a resident that didn't have an understanding of wastewater and we said we're going to put a sewer pump station next to your house, you bet I'd be concerned. So that's, you know, the point of this is to present it to the board and then eventually present to the public and work with the public to, to propose these sites. But without a good foundation of the pump station sites, that's what really the model is built on, so before we build the whole model, we want to make sure that everybody's in agreement with the pump shapes, pump station sites, because that's going to dictate the, the gravity mains and all the mains that tie into them. And then, once we have the model built, we can either run a scenario that keeps all the wastewater within the town of Harwich, or we can run another scenario that has it pumping to, uh, out of town, you know, to Dennis, if, you know, to, to look at the DHY agreement. That's later on down the line, we can get into that more later. But, you know, this is a, it's a very big project, but if you break it down step by step, it becomes more palatable. So really, step one is the pump station sites, and I think it's worth a, you know, an hour and a half, two-hour meeting just to go through these and, you know, we don't have to spend a ton of time at each site, but we'll do it right on Google Earth, we can do the street view, you can get an understanding of what it looks like, I can bring in examples of other pump stations, you know, what they, what we've designed for other towns and how we fit, fit the aesthetics, and I think it'll be a very productive meeting.
Thank you, Russ.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to you and members of the board, so you've heard the proposal for the special dedicated meeting, which I wholeheartedly endorse and agree with the team on that, as you've heard Russ say, the number of sites that you'll be discussing and the amount of detail and discussion you want to have for each site. There's another factor that would impact upon your scheduling of that, and that is we want to make sure that we have our best and brightest available and we're not going to have the best and brightest available after a certain date in, in one certain instance. And I'm just going to rip the Band-Aid off and say before, before our town engineer takes his well-deserved promotion in, in a neighboring community, I think we would, we would want to have a meeting that benefit, that has the benefit of him present. So we're contemplating your, your dedicated meeting to be no later than June 14th, so what we could do if you want to have that discussion, or anything else that you want to talk to Dan, Russ and Griffin about, is we would be contemplating, you have a dedicated meeting on the 14th for the pump station, pump station site discussion, and then perhaps you could rely upon June 15th as your quote "normal" board meeting or certainly any other action within that. Sorry, Griff, had to do it, we're going to miss your panel.
I'll go to the board. Don?
Yeah, this is kind of a non sequitur, but just rolling into that meeting, I want to get it really clear from Russ and company about what's going on. We had begun our planning, I wasn't part of that board, but our planning was begun based on a certain number of people being hooked up via grinder pumps, which also required them to buy a generator as a backup source for electricity. And essentially, those people were taking a hit for the town. I personally would like to see us make sure that, to the maximum extent possible, this is a municipal system. And I don't really like the idea of picking out, you know, 20 or 30 people who take a hit for the team of Harwich just because of where they live. I would rather see that as a collective responsibility so that if and when a pump station needs to be repaired, we are repairing it. It's not something where Mary has a pump state, a pump grinder, grinder pump in her house, I don't, because that's a big financial swing, both initially, because we're talking about 15 grand, basically, both initially and you're responsible for the maintenance of them. So, so before we even get to that meeting, I just want to get it out there on the table that the pump stations should be, to the maximum extent possible, the way we're pushing a gravity feed system that can't be pushed on low ground levels.
Yep. Thank you, Don. Mary?
I think Russ wanted.
Russ?
I did, I apologize for buttoning, I could, I just, those are very good, extremely good comments, I could just add on to that. Once we go through this first iteration, you know, I mentioned there's 30-something pump station sites, once everybody says, okay, that looks good, run your model, we're going to run the model and it's going to show the extent of those gravity sewers. We're going to run it with a maximum depth of 20 feet. So after we do that, we're going to come back a second time and it's going to be very clear where the gaps are of gra, of gravity coverage. We're going to say, okay, this little neighborhood here, you can see there's no gravity mains around it. Our options are, you can either low pressure the whole area, which sounds like we want to try to steer, steer away from, we can add another pump station somewhere within this area where it's most feasible, or we can modify the limits of the design if we drive the sewers deeper than 20 feet, which proceed with caution. If we do that, you can extend the sewer longer, but, you know, having sewers that deep is, is, can be potentially risky business, especially later on down the line if you have to do pipe rehab, maintenance, things like that. Plus, the construction costs are very high to do that. So we will be coming back after this first iteration of the 30-something pump stations to clearly show where the gaps of gravity coverage are, and then we can make a decision. If you have a neighborhood, it's usually, you know, if there's six parcels, is it really worth putting in a pump station for six properties? You have to ask that question. It's a cost-benefit relationship, generally around, so, you know, 12 to 15 parcels is where it starts making more sense for a small pump station. I worked in a town where one house is tied to a pump station, it's a, it's a long story. And it was, it's a very unique setting, so, uh, we will come back and show those gaps of the gravity coverage and we can have that discussion at that time.
Thank you, Russ. Mary?
I have no questions, I just look forward to the meeting.
Great, Larry?
I have none, this will be a start and we'll, and the 14th works for me, I'm actually leaving town the 15th.
So the real meeting, you're not going to be here?
The real meeting, yeah.
So, the 14th is fine, Joe. And then I think when we do our agenda discussion on that, there might be some things that we can put on a consent agenda. We'll look at what the agenda would look like for, for Monday, certainly want to give them enough time. And the only public statement I would make is, this is for consideration. We're ultimately have a CWMP which shows that part of town being sewed. This board is not saying that what we're doing right now, that we're going to jump into searing that part of town. So this is for consideration, there's still a lot of unanswered questions for me related to East Harwich, which I also know we're working on, so. 14th works fine.
Thank you.
Dan?
Dan?
Yeah, if I can just add one more note to the conversation with respect to the CWMP, I just want to make the board aware that the team here did have a, a brief but introductory meeting with the MEPA office with respect to kind of our initial direction and what we're looking to change with CWMP. We're currently in the process of scheduling a follow-up meeting with Brian from DEP, he's, he was on a couple of months ago to talk about the IA systems. So just so that you're aware that, that that wheel is in motion and we are making progress.
Thank you, Dan. Joe, anything further?
Nope, thank you. Michael, you wanted to ask Griffin to make some comments?
Griffin, do you have anything to say?
Um, no, there's, there's, this is a good start, I mean, there's, there is more to talk about than just the pump stations. I think, you know, the revisions to the CWMP and how we navigate that's important and I think the discussion on regionalization, whether it is actual, an entity or similar regionalization to, to what we're doing with Chatham. You know, there might, there might be other options with other neighboring communities too, as, as nitrogen trading is discussed more, so, you know, there's a lot more to come and, and I think this is a good start.
Thank you, Griffin. Okay, moving on to contracts. Discussion and possible vote for the Board of Selectmen to authorize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to execute change order number three with RJV Construction Corporation for Phase Two Contract Two of the Harwich Sewer Construction Project for $16,263.
Well, so moved, you want me to read?
Nope.
Read it again, right, we got the information.
Second.
And they're well documented, by the way.
Yep, so moved and seconded to approve said contract, any discussion?
Can we mention for the public that it's well within our contingency?
Yeah.
Funding?
Mentioned. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. B, discussion and possible vote for the Board of Selectmen to authorize Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to execute change order number five with Robert B. Hour Company, Inc. for Phase Two Contract One of the Harwich Sewer Construction Project, $13,682.
So moved.
Second.
And this is also well explained and the Don's point is, is within our contingency funds, so it's covered.
Excellent. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. All right, discussion and possible vote to approve memorandum of understanding between the nutrition program for the elderly and the Harwich Community Center, $75 per month.
Well, so moved. Discussion on that.
Second. Second for discussion, any discussion? All right, go to roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Do you want to just read this one?
You want me to practice, is this what I'm supposed to be doing?
You can do one, yes, thank you, Mary.
Discussion and possible vote to authorize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Mary, you can just do, I move to approve, you don't have to do the first part.
Okay. I move to approve that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen execute contracts with Barnstable County for dredging of Allen Harbor Channel for $98,217 and the dredging of Sacquet Tucket Harbor Channel for $108,000.
Second.
Excellent. And then just to point out to the public, all the information is in the public packet for this, for this subject, so anything that you want to read about, it's in there. Any discussion from the board? Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. And you could do this one too, which is a move to approve.
Okay. I move to approve that we award the surplus beach sand bids to the following people, Wendy and Douglas Krieger, $1050 per unit, Charlie Dixon, $951 per unit, Air Lane Property Owners Association, $1075 per unit, Joseph Nolan, $11 per unit, Peter Lambertis, $1250 per unit, Michael Pilitz, $9 per unit, Ellen Broussard, $1050 per unit, Paul and Karen Cormier, $11 per unit, and Karen Agnew, $1357 per unit.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, and any discussion? Don?
Yeah, I just, out of curiosity, I mean, they're all listed here, and since they're all different amounts, how is this allocated? I mean, is the highest bid for this product, get what they need or want first, and then go sequentially down until you get to the lowest bid, or?
I'm going to turn to John Rendon, who's on the call.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Rendon, Harbor Master. So, that's correct, Selectmen Hall, it goes essentially by the highest bidder, would be selected first to receive what they requested, and we work our way down based upon that, I think. Based upon the pre-dredge surveys that just came back, we're going to be able to accommodate all requests, in addition to the public beaches that we intend to, to nourish.
Answer your questions, Don?
Sort of, just as a follow-up, I, I only mention that because the way that the bids were listed in our packet might lead somebody to believe that this is the order that they're getting it, but it wouldn't make any sense then, because the dollar figures don't follow the numbering.
Thank you for pointing that out. Mary?
My, my only question, is this everyone who bid on it? Or are these the ones that are going to get awarded?
It is, that's everybody who put a bid in.
That's everybody. Okay, thank you.
Larry?
That leaves the obvious question, were there, did we have more sand that we could have sold, or are they going back to the public, public beaches, or how does that work?
I think for Sacquet Tucket, we're probably going to have more sand than I had intended to, to put on our public beaches, so we'll probably, you know, try to put it, put more on our public beaches. It's hard to, you know, it's hard to figure, because you have a certain amount coming out of Sacquet Tucket, and you can only reach a certain distance with the pipeline to get to both public beaches and privates. So it's a little challenging in every regard.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Moving on to the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The only item I have this evening, as you see in your packet, is the update regarding the process to replace the Snack Shack so-called at Sacquet Tucket Harbor. And really, the, the story there is, is we are, we, the town, through council, are working with the Griffiths family and their council to come to a conclusion on the equipment. As I wrote in my memo, really what I'm also trying to avoid is, we're trying to get out of a lease that really did not give the town what we would normally get, and a lease that are, that we now know that we should put forward. That is to say, I'm striving to make sure that we do not recommit the sins of the past. However, I remain hopeful that, because we could potentially, through council's advice, issue a license agreement for this season, that we may be able to do that sooner rather than later. I have a call back into Attorney Fair tomorrow, we had a conversation last week, and I gave them full guidance to indicate that the town would be very desirous of acquiring the equipment with a reasonable cost, much less we own the equipment at Hot Stove at Cranberry Valley. So really, it's just trying to extricate the lease, the, the current lesssee from that, and doing it better going forward.
This is a non-debatable item, but I will allow for comment from the board, just brief comments to Joe on this. Don?
Yeah, just as a comment, speaking of not wanting to repeat the sins of the past, I believe that there are a number of local people who were interested in at least bidding on a future contract, I'm not sure about the licensing agreement for this year, but it didn't appear, and I know you've spoken, Mr. Chair, to some of the establishments, it didn't appear that the last time around, that any of the local people actually received a bid, they relied on COMBIs, which is the state procurement system. So personally, I would, I would like to encourage, you know, bid participation from the local businesses, to see if there's anyone that could align with what we're trying to do.
Mary?
Not to repeat my comments last time, but I'd like to make sure there are some snacks, in fact, at the Snack Shack.
Absolutely.
I'll try not to say that every week.
Truth, though.
Comments I, I'm getting from folks, you know, when's it going to open again? They miss it, and I guess I have a conflict of interest, because I want to sit there and have a beer again, so.
My only comment, Joe, is if we could look at a licensing agreement next week, time is of the essence.
Understood.
We are, we are, we are way past where we should have been on this, and I, and I appreciate the current tenant situation and family situation, and how it progressed to something that we don't want to talk about, but the, the, this is an important part that the town fought for in the revitalization of Sacquet Tucket Harbor. The only other comment I'll make, and you and I will discuss this for a future agenda item, is Attorney Fair has indicated that due to the poor quality of the existing lease agreement, interesting statement, since his firm created the leasing agreement. And I'll leave it at that, and we will talk about it going forward.
Understood, Mr. Chairman.
So that's not a reflection on any town staff or anything else, but the law firm is calling out their own law firm. Anything else on Town Administrator?
That completes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Selectman's report, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I wasn't going to say anything, but since Larry just brought up something out of left field about 15 minutes ago, there's four of us. From moving forward in the summertime, I think it's kind of important that people share their plans, because Larry had no way of knowing whether I wanted to take the 15th off, which would have left us short of a quorum.
Yeah.
So we need to be able to inform the Chair what's going on.
Great idea.
Yep.
Mary?
I don't have anything.
Larry?
Joe, we should be able to share our calendars using, on, on the town site. I mean, the technology's certainly there, if you use any of those, yeah. But I mean, just, you could share calendars you want as well.
You're way more sophisticated than I am. I don't have a calendar. So, any board member that's planning a vacation, just shoot me a message, so that we can decide if we can have a meeting or not. Okay? I don't have a calendar.
But you have a phone.
I do have a phone. So I, I would just ask that the board members start to consider your goals. In very short order, we have to create goals and objectives. I will tell you that my goal and objective, and I will circulate it, not for discussion, to the board, just to see where my head is at, is finishing a whole bunch of things that we've started and not finished, without going and creating things that we're really not going to do anyway. We are pressed for time, there's a lot of things to get finished, and there's a lot of very important topics before the town. And I think that we have more than enough to keep us busy, and I will work with the Town Administrator, so that his goals and objectives try and align ours, and we can actually get something done. Secondly, I would, I would ask for your request for liaisons to committees. I'm not saying you're going to get them, but I'll do my best to give everybody something that they're interested in. But Mary, for your, for your knowledge, we are a liaison, a selectman is a liaison to every committee.
Right.
So we'll, we'll put, I'll put together a list of what you will be the liaison for, so preferences, please send them, and then I will make it up. We'll go over the liaison policy when we do that, because we're really just board support, we're not participating in the meetings.
Or a voting member.
Or a voting member. We're, we're basically there to answer technical questions, get them legal advice if, if they need, but we're really not to interfere on the committee level. I will put together a fifth selectman block, and then I will put initials of us four next to that fifth member's block, to be support until we get a fifth member. And that's really all I have, no other report. But please send me information, so that I can get started on it, so that we're not up against the same deadlines that we're running into on budget. That's it. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
I did.
I seconded.
Oh, you made it? He seconded it. Okay. There'll be no discussion on this? Don?
Aye.
Signature's going.
Aye.
Mary? Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye, and there's a signature for.